Good evening and welcome to the first debate of the Davis City Council Candidates Election here in June of 2014. The election will be held the first Tuesday of June and today is April 2nd and so probably a lot of things will happen between now and then, but we have a lot of great issues to discuss ahead of us. First of all, we want to thank our fellow citizens who are here in the audience with us and also everyone watching at home and to the five candidates here today with us for participating in this important part of our democracy. Our community deserves elected officials who are willing and able to work with our local businesses and concerned citizens and community organizations to find solutions for today's problems. Up on the screen, we have some of the attributes that we believe at the Davis Chamber PAC that are necessary to fulfill the goal of fiscal stability and community success: leadership, focus, transparency, independence, rational judgment, a professional temperament, and limited future political aspirations. The event that we have organized for you today is presented by the Political Action Committee of the Davis Chamber of Commerce. That organization was created a couple of decades ago by the Chamber of Commerce in order to support and/or oppose measures and candidates that may or may not benefit the community in ways that we think are beneficial. The Davis Chamber of Commerce, it's important to note, has been in existence for over 105 years and is not directly linked to this PAC. The PAC has its own structure and guidelines that it follows independently and within those guidelines, they are overseen by the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. So if you think of it as a willful young teenager who you've let have the keys to the car and you've given a curfew and perhaps some spending money, as long as they don't break any of the rules, you let them continue doing what they're doing. But please rest assured for the rest of our community and the business community that as soon as those privileges are abused, then the Chamber of Commerce would pull the plug and so take away the keys and cut off the flow of money and all those things. So I know it's a little confusing for folks as we hear a lot about PACs, about super PACs and all those things. This is a community organization that is funded by local people and small donations and we have limits on those contributions and we are absolutely transparent in everything that we do financially. So I hope that you'll check out our website, davischamberpac.com and learn a little more about the organization. I don't know if I told you who I am, but my name is Kemble Pope and I am the CEO of the Davis Chamber of Commerce and we are very happy to have you here today. Let me tell you a little bit about the debate and how it's structured. We're going to start with introductions by each of the candidates and we'll give each of you a minute and a half in order to tell us a little bit about yourself. The next round will be specific candidate questions. In the past several weeks, the Political Action Committee has met privately with each of the candidates that we have here today with us and asked a series of questions to get to know them a little better. And the questions that we formulated today that are unique for each candidate work to get a little bit deeper into some of those areas that we want to know about you and that we think it's important for the community to learn about you. During that time, we'll probably ask each of you two, three, or four questions and you'll have two minutes to answer each question. During that time, in front of you, you each have some cards. We have rebuttal periods that we have allotted to you, 30 sec, two 30-second rebuttals and two 90-second rebuttals and one 30-second question. So at any point during the debate...
Sixteen.
My apologies. 60 seconds and 30 seconds are the two time periods that you have available to you. You'll raise that card and if you would like to add to one of the other candidates' discussion of a specific question, perhaps refute something that was said, then that is your opportunity to do that. We have here Susan Kirby from the Da Vinci Charter Academy who is our chief ambassador and will be using her time skills, which apparently she's been owning at other events, to make sure that we all stay within the given boundaries that we have. When you have 60 seconds remaining, Susan will raise a card and tell you 60 seconds are remaining and let you know that you have 30 seconds and then 10 seconds. If during any of this period, my colleagues at the table here, I'd like to recognize Steve Greenfield who is the chairman of the Political Action Committee and a former chairman of the Board of the Davis Chamber of Commerce and we have Betsy Marshawn here, former Yolo County Supervisor, honorary life member of the Chamber of Commerce. If we feel like you're going off topic, then it's possible that we may pull a play from our friends at AYSO and give you a yellow card. And if you ignore our yellow card and you stay off topic, then we may give you a red card, at which point I may forcibly ask you to get back on topic. So those are our question cards and rebuttal periods. The one thing that's a little new this year is the single 30-second question card and you have one of those. If at any time you would like to ask another one of the candidates a question, you may raise this card, we'll recognize you and then you have 30 seconds to formulate a question to another specific candidate and then that candidate will have a minute to answer that question. We would ask that you please stay within the topic at hand, so if you ask it after a question has been raised about water, that you stay somewhere in the general vicinity of water, which we all know is a big topic. At about 7:45, we're going to get into a moderated discussion. We have several questions that we would like all of you to answer and so we'll have that and try to do the best that we can to guide an open discussion amongst you. Then we will consider audience-submitted questions, so the live audience that we have here with us today have question cards that they'll be filling out and passing up to the front and Mrs. Marshawn will be taking those questions and creating some thematic areas that we may ask you. And then I'll give closing remarks because unfortunately, we do not have time to give you closing remarks. So with that being said, why don't we get started? We have our first candidate today and the order tonight was selected randomly. I drew these out of a hat, but before we do that, I forgot my patriotic duty and I would like to invite Debbie Davis, editor and you have a publisher title too, I believe, Mrs. Davis.
Assistant publisher.
Assistant publisher and editor of the Davis Enterprise and former board chair of the Davis Chamber of Commerce, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Debbie? Thank you, everyone. Sheila Allen, 90 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the chamber for this opportunity. I care about the health and well-being of our community and all of my 65,000 neighbors. I have a proven track record of positive, active leadership during my nine years as an elected official on the Davis School Board and 10 years as a Yolo First Five Commissioner. I have worked with others to preserve community-supported programs during unprecedented state budget cuts. I will bring a similar approach to help bring the city budget in balance with an evaluation of additional strategic cuts, but also work with the community to enhance revenue. As with my experience on the school board, I will have a fair approach to compensation and believe in both shared sacrifice and shared benefit when things improve. I support strategies to enhance economic development by working with our business community and expanding our tax base through a research and innovation park. I also support the half-cent sales tax increase as a part of this balanced approach. All public entities, including the city council, need a transparent budget process with community participation as we implemented on the school board with our parcel tax oversight committee. I have a vision for Davis that is healthy, friendly, safe, and neighborly. Much of this does not cost money. As Executive Director of the New Yolo Healthy Aging Alliance proves, when government, nonprofits, interested community members all come together, we can solve problems and change can happen. Areas I...
Thank you, Sheila. That's 90 seconds.
Was it? I had two paragraphs of really good things. I'll sneak them in later.
Daniel.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I wanted to first off, thanks to chamber for putting this together, everyone for showing up tonight and of course, all the candidates for not only showing up but also agreeing to run for this election. I think we represent a pretty diverse group and I think it's going to be a pretty exciting next 60 days. My name is Daniel Prella. I was born and raised on the outskirts of Davis and I'm running because I want to start a family here someday and I want Davis to be a place where young people can afford to live and find jobs. I think that Davis is becoming increasingly unaffordable. I mean, for anyone who's keeping track, the sales tax in June and the parcel tax in November will be the ninth and 10th taxes that we have passed in the past decade. In addition, people have seen their federal taxes go up, state taxes go up, they've seen water rates go up, electric rates go up, rent go up, tuition go up, gas prices are going up again. I think that Davis is becoming increasingly unaffordable and increasingly difficult for a young family to start a family here. And whenever I walk precincts and I knock on doors, one thing that I always notice, whenever a young person comes up and their parents come with them, I ask, "What do they do for a living?" And invariably, they say something like, "They work at the university" or "They work at the Schilling Robotics" or "Marone Bio." They work at high-paying jobs and that's why I'm so glad the discussion is moving towards job creation because I think that job creation is really important. If we can get enough jobs for young people to find work and afford to live here, we can prevent the demographic changes that are happening in Davis. So, thank you.
Thank you. And John Munn, next, please.
Well, thanks to the chamber for having us here and thanks to everyone else for coming. With only a minute and a half, I can't say a lot about my background. If you want to know more, see my campaign website. I have practical experience from growing up on a farm and a ranch and I graduated from UC Davis a long time ago with degrees in soil and water sciences and in engineering. This was followed by professional positions involving soil and watershed work. I'm now retired and have been helping with family projects. Shell eight I met at UC Davis and we returned to Davis in 1978. Our children grew up here. Offices that I have held include Professional Soil Scientist of Association of California President, President of the Yolo County Taxpayers Association, and I was an elected member of the Davis School Board from 1997 through 2001, where we worked together to overcome inherited deficits along with restoring employee and public trust. So I have experience and perspective in private and government enterprises, natural resources, education, and elective office. I'm running for city council to work for fiscal sustainability so that we can all afford to live in Davis. Solving problems facing the city of Davis will take time, effort, and interest. I'm retired, so time's available. I'm willing and able to do the work and my record of speaking out on fiscal issues and taking action against excessive rate and tax increases shows that my concerns are real. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Rochelle Swanson.
Good evening. It is great that this is such a full house. Thank you, of course, to the chamber and for the people showing up here and I would be remiss not to do my usual plug when we have this many people in this chamber. Please, please, please come back on April 15th where we'll be discussing the budget for the first time for this year. I know I should be talking about who I am as a candidate and what I've done. It's really the most important thing in front of us and while I am a candidate, I'm a council member first and I cannot reiterate enough how important it is to have engagement. I am very excited to have four people up here with me that I think will have some very creative ideas, ideas that I hope that only can be implemented in the next 60 days but in the next few years going forward. There's a lot of issues that are challenging our city. You know, we continue to propound about the 5.1 annual deficit that continues to grow. We talk about the loss of revenues that we've had and we still haven't pulled out of our recession yet. We talk about the limitations that we have in our community because of our policies and because of our demographics and because of our location. But what I really want to interrate is we have a lot to be excited about. We have so many riches, consistent opportunities, and there's a lot to be done. And I've spent a lot of time the last three and a half years specifically investing and leveraging those assets so that we don't have to continue to go on about taxes and where we're at and worried about, are the next generation going to be able to live here? We can make this place affordable simply by relying on the resources that we have and by engaging our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Rob Davis.
Okay, thanks a lot. I'm running for the Davis City Council because I believe I have the skills and experience necessary to help our community face the many challenges in the years ahead. I have over 25 years of experience in maternal and child health programming in over 30 nations around the world, working in areas of deep poverty, some of the most intractable health problems on the planet. I've always done it as part of a collaborative team, a multidisciplinary team of people to identify the problems, work together towards solutions, and put forth community-based programs. I am a collaborative problem solver and I bring those skills to the city of Davis. Over the last five years, I've had the opportunity to work with grassroots efforts in Davis. I worked for the Davis Community Meals Transitional Housing Shelter where I've come face-to-face with the problems of homelessness and addiction and exclusion. I work with children in schools on safe cycling with city staff to develop the bike plan that has just been approved by city council. I've also had the opportunity over the last year to work with the district attorney on the Neighborhood Courts Program and an alternative, restorative justice, alternative to the punitive justice system. The things I've learned in those areas of work, I will bring to bear on policymaking at the city. I will be focused on Davis. My political career begins and ends in this town. I will stay focused on the needs of this city so that we can achieve an economically, socially, and environmentally healthy city. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank all of you for those introductory comments. We'll move now into the specific candidate questions. You have two minutes to answer each question and we will circulate through all of you and hopefully have time for three or four rounds, time permitting. And remember that you have the opportunity to use the five rebuttal and question cards in front of you. Our first question today is for Mrs. Allen.
It's the A-advantage.
There are a number of similarities between the city and the school district in terms of infrastructure, budget, and unfunded liabilities. This is of particular concern, given that there are insufficient resources to fund all of the current priorities. You recently voted to give teachers a 2% raise. City employees have not received any raises in quite some time and one could argue that they deserve a raise. On the other hand, there is a massive maintenance backlog for infrastructure and technology upgrades and at the school district, there are the concerns about increasing class sizes and sufficient counseling resources, et cetera. Given all these pressing priorities, how do you, how did you determine that the best use of the recently increased state funding passed through was to raise teachers' salaries?
Thank you for that question. This goes to one of my points that I wanted to make sure that people understand is that my approach to the budget is a balanced approach. So what I did, what we did with the school district as a team and as everyone knows as an elected official you are, it's one person and you have to work together as a team, but we did not increase salaries of our employees until there was sufficient funds to do that in a balanced approach. We did, over the last five years, ask all of our employees in a fair way to take cuts and take furlough days and to have increased class sizes and harder work. As funding came back from the state, then we took a balanced approach in that way and we did negotiate an increase fairly across all of our units for an increase, but at the same time, we had a deep, we're decreasing our class sizes, we're addressing some of our technology needs, and we are also looking at some of our infrastructure things like our HVAC and some of the pressing issues related to some of the infrastructure things. So I will use the same approach for the city. So the city is in somewhat of a different place right now than the school district is. They seem to be about two years, where we were about two years ago. So they are still, the city is still in the position where there has, I support the imposed cuts on the two and then they, the two union groups and then the negotiated for the other three. I support those because that's where we are now. But in the future, when funding comes back, one of my priorities would be a fair approach for increases. That's not, we're not there yet because there's insufficient funds for that and there are some of the pressing matters that you suggested, but it's really important to me to make sure that we have a balanced approach, looking at both sides of the coin, both revenue enhancement and strategic cuts going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Prella, you have stated that you do not support the rate structure associated with the surface water project despite the fact that the business community partook in a thorough process to evaluate the costs and impacts of passing Measure I and worked diligently on the current rates to ensure that all users, single-family residential, apartment dwellers, commercial, and industrial, would share the burden more equitably. Understanding that the project has already been approved by the majority of voters, what changes, if any, would you need to see in order to agree with the rates and construction of our new surface water project?
Yeah, I think it's a great question. I like to preface that by saying I always supported the surface water project and I think that CBFR has the potential, that's the name of the rate structure, has the potential to be a phenomenal rate structure. I think that, I love the fact that it moves away from the size of the pipe, which is never really a realistic way to judge water consumption. My issue with CBFR is one issue and one issue only and I think that my age, as someone who's close to a college-age person, I understand the issue more than some people, is that Davis has a huge transient populace. We have, over 55% of Davis are renters. There's, we have 20,000 students that come in every year who leave in September and come in June and that's really my issue with CBFR is that CBFR takes your usage from May to October and that dictates how much you pay for the rest of the year. And when it was looked at by a water attorney by the name of Kelly Stone, she mentioned that, you know, the CBFR has a lot of potential, it's something the city of Davis can be proud of if we can make it work, but she, but she mentioned that in order for it to work in a town like Davis where it has so many people who move every single year, and it's not just the students, I mean, one thing I've noticed, I don't know if any of the other candidates up here have, when I've been walking precincts, I usually have a list of people who, who they voted in the past few years, but when I knock on the doors in some aspects of Davis, in particular, central Davis, I notice that no one's who they're supposed to be. The turmoil in some of the neighborhoods in Davis is absolutely insane and I think that Kelly Stone made a good point when she said that you can use either annual consumption rates to look at it, that kind of alleviates the problem, or you can have some kind of appeal process where if you can prove that you don't use as much water as the previous occupant, you can get a lower fixed rate. And the reason I support that is because we have, we are planning on reducing our water conservation by 20% in the next four years and I think if we're going to do that, we need to take a holistic approach to doing it. We can't just look at just the 40 or 50% of people who are homeowners in Davis. We have to appeal to everyone and that means the students, that means the renters, that means everyone in Davis. And so to answer your question, all I would like to see in CBFR, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Measure P, it can just be with something done by the city council, I would like to see them address that, either with a appeal process or an annual consumption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prella. Mr. Munn, 60-second rebuttal card on the topic of water rate structure.
Yeah, I have some thoughts about water rates. First thing I want to say is that I support Measure P to repeal the current water rate system because it unfairly shifts the burden of paying for new water facilities onto single-family residents. Also want to point out that if the current rates stay in place, they will have some unintended consequences. They're going to force much larger water use reductions than are being anticipated. We're assuming 20%. If we have larger reductions because of the enormous increase in water cost along with large irrigators such as Village Homes, Old Willough Bank, El Machero, the school system, and the city itself, who are talking about withdrawing from the city system because of these high costs, the result will be much lower than projected water demand that causes much higher rates on the remaining customers who cannot escape.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Now I have a question for you, sir. You claim to be a budget-friendly candidate. What specific items from the current 2014-15 city budget do you believe should be adjusted to create a more sound economic environment in our community?
Well, the problem with that question is it's asking before there's a thorough budget analysis to identify what's going to get cut and that is not the way that I would approach the problem. I would approach budget development by taking a hard look at where the revenues are coming from and where the spending is going. Revenues are not all the same. They can't all be used for the same things. You have to look at particular revenue streams, find out how large they are, what their uses are restricted to, and then assemble a picture of what money we have available. Once that picture is there, then we can talk about the spending. Now, spending is associated with particular revenues. So if a revenue source doesn't provide enough funds for a particular type of spending, then decisions have to be made about the general fund. And this has got us into a lot of troubles in the past since a lot of the money that comes into the general fund is originally intended for one use and over time, it gets shifted to other uses and then we wonder, why?
Mr. Munn, we're looking for specific items from the current 2014-2015 city budget. I think we understand that you want a more thorough budget analysis, but do you have any examples from the current budget that you think need to be analyzed in more depth or that should be cut or expanded?
From the current budget? Well, we're always going to have to look closely at the pension and the healthcare costs because that's what's going to drive us into large problems into the future. So if you wanted me to identify one specific area that we're going to have to pay attention to, has, attention has been paid to and needs to go on into the future, it's going to be pension and healthcare costs.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Mr. Davis, 60-second card?
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult question to answer because we've just completed recently negotiations with all the, with all the employee groups in the city. We know the drivers, the major drivers of the fiscal imbalance have to do with pensions, they have to do with other post-employee benefits, they have to do with healthcare. We will not be opening those contracts up for another couple of years. Now, the city manager put forth a list of cuts, no prioritization, just a list of total cuts that would get us to the 5.1 million. Before we can do anything, we've got to take a look at what are the opportunities within those cuts. We need to ask for prioritization. What can we do first? But beyond that, we have to have a community conversation about this. I mean, if we're going to make cuts in the area of safety, which none of us desire and would never say, if we're going to make cuts to programs for kids, we're going to have to have a community conversation. We haven't had that conversation yet.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Swanson, if elected, you have indicated that you would champion a streamlining of the zoning code in order to encourage increased residential and commercial density with increased height limitations in the core area. How would you change current zoning and the downtown specific plan and other conflicting planning documents to achieve this goal? And what has the council done to address the historically low amount of open commercial spaces in downtown?
I'm going to start from the end and go back about some of the things we've historically done. There's been issues of looking at what are the vacancy rates, what can be done to be able to further encourage the use and some of the flow and also, how do we do business outreach? Business and Economic Development Commission, which is one of the first ones that I sat on as a liaison, actually started engaging the community to find out what do we need to do for retention. We've continued that program and it has become stronger. But to your heart of your question, what we need to do is actually continue the work that we've already started that has been stymied for the lack of staff, resources, and bandwidth. We charged the planning commission with going through our code, zoning code, the general plan, and all the specific area plans in the downtown core area. And what we were looking for was to see where was there conflict? You know, having 15 years in land use history, it's been surprising to me to see how many times you could look at one particular parcel and you really don't understand what can or can't I do here? At the end of the day, whether you are a resident doing a remodel or you are a business owner or whether or not you're someone coming in with a nonprofit that wants to start something new here and get off the ground, the number one important thing is certainty. Two weeks can make or break a deal whether or not it opens and that is something that we have had weaknesses, but we have also worked really hard for. If people haven't been to city hall lately and been into the planning department, I think they would be really amazed at some of the differences where the staffers worked very hard to streamline the process. But that, and we have gotten sidelined. We've got sidelined with the budget, we've gotten sidelined with some of the water issues and what I would like to see is that we re-engage and recommit and we have talked about the last time that we met with them. And going to height restrictions, I think it has to actually be done with looking at what we have after we've done that first because if we try to make new policy with not addressing the inaccuracies and the conflicts with our current policy, all we're doing is adding one more layer of bureaucracy and one more layer of rules that actually frustrates the process. the process. And with my last two seconds, I want to tell Daniel, we do have an appeal process in place.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. Mr. Davis, progress has been made recently to reduce the rate of city employee compensation growth compared to the previous contracts. Unfortunately, the growth rate is still unsustainable. What is your plan to address this unsustainable rate of growth in city employee compensation plans?
So just to be clear, you don't want me to talk about rate of growth of costs and reduction of costs at all?
Your plan to control
Other costs.
All costs associated with employment at the city of Davis?
Yeah, well, I already, I think, alluded to the reality that we're in, which is that we are not, for another two years, going to be moving back to discussions with employees about, negotiates with employees about their, their compensation packages. And we are talking about total compensation here. That's the driver. It's actually the cost of compensation to the city. Sad thing is, our employees may be taking home less money, but the cost of compensation to the city is going up. We have serious constraints. We cannot break promises. We cannot go back and undo the pension offerings that have been made in the past. The way forward, I think, is going to be based on a couple of really important things. First of all, we cannot demonize our staff and make them the enemy. We cannot say you are the problem. They are part of our community. We must bring them in together to say, how are we going to solve this? There will be hard decisions, because the pensions that they are lined up to receive increasingly calpers, outcalpers because of a number of changes in their actuarial approach, and also because they underfunded it for years, is requiring the city to pay even more. These are not our employees' problems. They're all our problems. The solutions are not going to be easy. The way forward in the short term is going to be asking employees to give back more. And I don't mean giving salary, I mean paying a greater contribution to their pension, to their medical. It may involve reducing further, even to zero, cafeteria cash-out plan. It may involve changing other aspects of the medical plan. Do I want to do these things? No. Do the city employees want to hear that someone up here may want to do those things? No. I will not demonize them. I will negotiate honestly with them. We must begin immediately as a council, when we sit, to lay out exactly our approach to negotiation, even though it's two years off.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Prell, 30-second rebuttal?
I absolutely agree with everything that Rob just said. And the point that I was hoping I could push a little bit more on was the fact that, so not to demonize the public employees, it's very important to remember that we negotiated successfully with five of the seven groups, and that if all of them had dug in like the other two groups had, we probably wouldn't have gotten the labor negotiations that we were able to successfully negotiate. It's very important for us to continue having a working relationship with them. It's one of those things where a lot of people want to just mass outsource, and I don't think that's the way to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prell. Mrs. Swanson, a 30-second rebuttal, and then Mr. Munn, 30 seconds.
This is an important topic, and I think that's why you're seeing so many of the rebuttal cards. I absolutely agree. The demonization of our employees is very difficult, and the employee morale that we see within these walls and throughout the city is tough. But I also, what I want to elaborate on for this question is it's even beyond this issue. The role of a council member is not simply to sit on the dais on a Tuesday night, or to try to work within the city. We need to get out of their comfort zone, and we need to go to the Capitol, and we need to go to Washington DC. And that's been a part of what I've tried to do on these policies, because a lot of the limitations that Rob talks about specifically have to do with policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson.
Thank you.
Mr. Munn, 30 seconds.
Well, I guess I'm just going to say I agree with what I've heard. There is one issue that hasn't been brought up. It's a very tough issue, and again, it has an effect on employee morale. But one of the approaches to getting costs of salaries under control is outsourcing. I just want to say the word, so that we know that it's part of the picture.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Ms. Allen, 30 seconds. We've got a popular topic here.
It is indeed. I want to reiterate about the importance about not demonizing, and the other thing is about treating all of our employees equally and fairly. I've been very concerned about particular groups that have been trying to be squashed and a lot of negative about that. That is very bad idea. The thing, another thing that we haven't done, besides talking to the community, and I think we really need to talk to the employees, because I think they have ideas about ways that there could be cost savings, and I'd like to hear those ideas. And I also would like to work with them about going forward and
Thank you, Mrs. Allen.
Going forward.
I'd like to take a moment here, now that we've given everyone a question to recognize the service that all five of you are offering. And thank you for being so educated and passionate about the issues in front of our community. And if the studio audience agrees with me, maybe we can give you a little bit of support with a round of applause. But just because we're giving you pats on the head doesn't mean that we're going to not give you hard questions now, so. Mrs. Allen, you were quoted a few weeks back saying that you were, quote, "getting a better handle on unfunded liabilities," end quote. Can you give us three examples of what you better understand now than you did when you first made the statement?
Sure. There is, there's been some additional decisions by the council over the last few weeks even that have added to that. I have concerns about the $5.1 million ongoing deficit. I think some of that is in the area of health benefits. And health benefits are very important to me as a public health nurse. I think, I personally believe in single-period system and healthcare for all. But while we are living within these bounds, I have concerns about the cashing out ability. That's just something that is not done in other areas. So that is an area that we could do a better job with, and will need to, to work with them on. I have concern about the road plan. That's another area about the, the, see, there's a, I'm concerned that there's a very large apple that is, that we're trying to swallow the whole thing for roads. And I would like us to look carefully and prioritize, and to space those over more time, because there's just not enough in a single-year's budget in order to address that particular topic. And I am, there was recently the decision about the, well, even the green waste containers. I, oh, sorry, there's one other thing, the investigating the, the, 30 seconds, investigating if we're going to have public utility. I personally am supportive of the concept of a public utility, but I am very concerned while we're looking down the barrel of a, of a large deficit, of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, I was surprised that already 400,000 had been spent, that they're okaying an additional couple hundred thousand when we already have a deficit that we're looking at. I think it's the wrong time for that.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I have a 30-second rebuttal card from Mr. Davis.
If indeed we consider the roads and other maintenance backlogs as unfunded liabilities, which I assume we do, then the picture is dire. The city staff reports say we could spend $200 million over the next 20 years, over that, have the same pavement condition index that we have today, and have a greater backlog. In addition, we're not really sure what other maintenance backlogs exist. I sat with Nate Trownick over at the fire department. He's telling me the fire stations are in terrible shape. We need to get the full story on the table of what the maintenance backlogs in this city are.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Prell, your second question. In your candidate's statement, you prioritize generating revenue without increasing taxes in order to draw more people into our community. In light of significant city budget shortfalls and substantial financial obligations we will need to meet over the next 10-plus years, how do you propose reducing our deficits without increasing taxes?
Again, I like to preface that as mostly, the sales tax in June and the parcel tax in November, I think, are essential. There's really no way to close the budget in the short term without doing that. Mostly what I mean in the future is beyond that. I don't think we should have any more taxes beyond that. And one thing that I really think we should be doing is focusing on the Innovation Park Task Force reports. One area I really like is Nishi. There's a lot of work being done there. It's primarily residential at the moment, which I'm a little disappointed about, but I do think that there are some good places for research and development that'll help generate some revenue. And mostly, I am interested in a peripheral business park on Mace 185. I think it is the best place in the city for a business park. I think that we should be very picky about the businesses that we attract. In particular, Moriseki, for instance, was a wonderful, wonderful company that we brought. And not only do they generate a ton of property tax, but I recently found out they're also a top 25 sales tax generator in the city. So I thought that was an interesting thing to figure out. I think that the business park, when it comes to generating that revenue, is really the only way we have of meeting our deficit without raising another 10 taxes in the next decade. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prell. Mr. Munn, we have a similar question for you. What is your vision for growing revenue? How much, and from what sources?
First thing is to turn on the mic. I have actually focused more on the process of determining what revenues need to grow than on trying to tell you exactly what revenues are going to grow. When we talk about growth, you have economic development, which we're hearing a lot about, and there are tax proposals, which we're also hearing a lot about. On economic development, the next council's going to be dealing with actually quite a suite of parcels. Looks like the Nishi parcel will be coming forward, and that's located west of Richards, between I-80 and the railroad, a new hotel complex at the current University Park Inn and Cafe Italia site, the East Innovation Park, which is east of Mace and north of Second. There is a less developed West Innovation Park proposal near Sutter Hospital. And the chamber also mentions a fifth development, or another development area, which is the downtown, which continually has proposals of one sort or another for new businesses. It is promoted and hoped that this kind of economic development will bring businesses that will pay sales taxes, will pay property taxes, and increase the city revenues that way. The other side of the coin are the tax increases. Right now, we're looking at a, does that say 10? Not yet. Okay. We're looking at the tax increases, and the one that's before us most immediately is the sales tax. And if we ever start talking about taxes, I'd be happy to add more about that.
Ms. Swanson, 60 seconds.
And as I see every debate as an opportunity for education, and this one I need to weigh on, there's a lot of places to have revenue. And while it is true that we are looking at peripheral development and innovation task parks through the task force in different areas, including the center of town, which I believe you're talking about, the corp yard and PG&E, I really want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that we also have a lot of infill that we could densify. And those are immediate revenue sources. When somebody remodels a house and their parcel's reassessed, typically their tax base goes up. We've got a number of places throughout town which we could do that, and that's part of, goes back to the earlier question about what are the things that we need to change. We have approximately 26 different tax brackets throughout the community in different parcels, and that's something that I know the finance department has been looking at to see where we should also focus. Daniel mentioned the sales tax that comes in from Moriseki. Pointe de Sale is an amazing place that we really should focus, and that's why manufacturing continues to be touted as one of the best forms of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanson. I have another 60-second over here. Mrs. Allen.
Thank you. I've never been called Mrs. Allen before. It's very odd. You can call me Dr. Allen or Sheila.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just, a couple of things on economic development, just in case I don't get a question regarding that. I am very interested in the Innovation Research Park, in particular my favorite area right now, but there has to be really a strong community conversation on this, and that is the Mace area. That place already has the infrastructure that's available. Another advantage that it has is that we have the surrounding green belt that's already been put into place, so we don't have to worry about further expansion out that way. There are some really fabulous examples. I looked into my alma mater at University of Wisconsin that has an innovation park where they work closely with the university to get the, the ideas in the ivory tower right into the manufacturing. And so I would support that as a way to bring additional economic development.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Thank you.
Our next question here is for Dr. Swanson.
That would be Esquire.
That's what I say. In Davis, I don't generally mention it, because you're looking in a direction that they're in.
We'll get lost in the alphabet soup pretty soon.
Sheila, please, would I always prefer.
Sure thing. So let's all go to first names, then. Rochelle. As much as the current city council has been an improvement over previous councils, I'm getting to a point here. The process for setting priorities and allocating resources to match priorities, and the ability to focus on those priorities in the face of distractions, continues to be somewhat dysfunctional. What corrective steps do you propose to take to address this, particularly in light of our looming fiscal emergency?
I think first and foremost, we need to, if you're familiar with going through City Hall, we have a poster of a tree, and it's got six little pieces that talks about our priority areas, and one of them is community engagement. And I'd be the first to admit, that's probably our weakest. And one of the immediate steps that we can take is to quit talking about updating our website and get it online so that people can actively engage. There's a number of different kinds of software out there that staff has been working on to make sure that people feel comfortable to get on and see what's in our budget, and be able to actually allocate resources that they think that we should be focusing on. And the city council can continue to make this a friendly chamber. I have to say, I have just been so heartened by the diversity of people who now come to council. It is a wonderful thing. It's great to see people lining up in the aisle, waiting to talk on issues, and not just what's on the agenda, but also bringing issues forward. And, you know, we get the emails and phone calls. And while the council needs to work on it, I will go back to my earlier point, is that while we can fill these chambers on a number of items that actually do move us off the mark on our priorities, we need people engaged on the budget. One of the things that we've really worked on this year is getting people out of the city manager's office into the community to talk about the budget and revenues and the challenges. What I would like to see come forward is beyond just the city manager and council members, and occasionally staff. I would like to see us talk about actually doing town halls. We have NPRs in every school within our community that sits in, in every neighborhood. And I can't think of a better venue to where people can put their kids in their stroller, or they can just walk down the street, and they can actually engage and talk about what we're doing. I participated in a community engagement a couple of years ago where people used stickers, and were able to identify what we wanted and what they wanted to see. 15 people in four different venues, and mostly the same people. So we, as a city, have to do a better job to not only offer opportunities, but to really encourage and get people to understand why it's important, instead of people waiting until something's actually on the chopping block in a budget conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Speaking of children and everyone being more engaged, I'm glad that we have families here tonight. Rob, your campaign statement makes it very clear that social concerns rank high on your list of priorities. I'd like to know where does it rank in relation to the city budget and why? And this is a very large and diverse subject area, and so it just has an illustrative point. We've been hearing, and I think many folks in the community who are downtown a lot have seen a sharp increase in issues with a homeless population in our downtown that's drastically different in the past year than it was just a year ago. And that in and of itself is a very complex issue that many folks, including yourself, and many folks in the business community have worked, and the faith community have worked hard to address. So we just want to offer that as kind of one example where our community is engaging on these social issues. But I think we would just like to hear from you to expound a little bit more how social concerns will be prioritized with these fiscal and budget concerns that we have at hand.
Yeah, thanks a lot. And thanks for asking and the interest in this issue. Obviously, it's very close to me. First of all, as we know, social concerns, if we want to just use that lump term, social issues have traditionally been the purview of counties. We do have development block grants that we get from the federal government, pass on to local entities, including one I work for. But it's largely been the purview of counties. Those monies have been cut. We've lost a significant amount of our mental health services. We've lost drug and alcohol counseling. We've lost a successful meth treatment program in this county. How are we plugging the holes? Poorly. We're doing it poorly, because the needs are on the rise. What you're seeing in the downtown is largely driven by not just the economy, it's being driven by methamphetamines, one of the worst, one of the most disastrous things on our planet. And it's here, and it's now. And people are bound by it, and people can't get out of it, and they have no resources. We're dealing with syndromes of problems here. So homelessness, and jail time, and So homelessness, and jail time, and drug or alcohol addiction, and broken families. Our county services, though I really respect what Supervisor Saylor and Rexrode are doing, are simply not matching it. Now, to the question, I see the yellow card. It's time for us to have a parcel tax, even if it's a small amount, to bring some more resources to bear on these problems. We have done it for our parks. We have done it for open space. We have done it for our schools. We have done it for all manner of other things that we want in this community. We're talking about human resources here. Now, I'm not going to say I'm going to put forward an X percent sales tax, or an X percent, sorry, parcel tax. What I am going to say is, I'm going to open that discussion.
Mr. Davis, thank you. See, next up, we are back all the way aground again. So, Dr. Allen, Sheila.
Yes.
We've got another question for you, and that question is... You mentioned earlier that you support the imposed benefits and compensation structure on a couple of our employee groups.
Yes.
That there are still insufficient funds to fully get those folks in line where they want to be. In light of that, the city council recently approved three significant fire services cost-saving measures: the reduction from four firefighters to three firefighters on an engine, the so-called boundary drop between the city of Davis and UC Davis, and shared management services between the city and UC Davis. Which of these cost-saving measures do you support or oppose, and why? And are there any other similar cost-saving measures that we could glean with the university or other agencies?
Thanks. It's time to get bifocals, I think. I can't see you if I have my glasses on. Yes, those three things. Let me tell you, the dropping the boundary line was really smart. That's what needed to happen. All calls go to the police department, and now the closest unit gets there. Very, very important. I totally support that. Having the UC employee be in charge, be the fire chief for the whole, for the city and UC, I am concerned about from a management standpoint. I know that there is a plan, they have a plan in place, and that he has the two bosses that he will be in contact with. I understand how we got there, but I think in the long term, we need to evaluate if that's the best thing for the people of Davis. The three versus four, I've talked a lot in the community about this. I'm concerned that it was implemented as a cost savings without thinking about what the long-term implication of it. It will, it increases the response time for firefighters to go into a home. I understand, we don't have very many fires, but if it's your house and you that's in there, you want those firefighters to be in as soon as possible. So, I am very concerned about that. I'm also concerned that it's going to increase everybody, homeowners and businesses' insurance rates, because they look at the response times. So, we need to think about the economics of that. I also understand that we, that most of what the fire department does is not fighting fires, but they do medical calls. And there are some really great and interesting models out there, to having paramedics or even nurses on board so that they can do the response time and be the first responder and really intervene. The first five minutes make all the difference for a heart attack and a stroke. So, I think we need to look at a changing model and have it be smarter. And there's funding for it, perhaps, from healthcare reform.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Mr. Prellin, arguably the, I'm sorry, Daniel, we're at first names now, Daniel. Arguably, the single most important task of the city council is the hiring of the city manager. This next council will be doing just that. What are your three top selection criteria for the position of the city manager of Davis?
That's a good question, and absolutely an essential one. I did support our current city manager. It's a shame that he's leaving. I think that really what we're looking for in a city manager, we should look for someone without, who's not currently a part of the city, someone from the outside who we can draw in. Something, someone preferably who has experience working with cities that are in fiscal crisis, we can call it what it is. Hopefully, someone who's looked, who's worked in cities before that have dealt with something that we're dealing with right now. And the third criteria probably... I think what I liked about Steve, actually, was he was very, had strong communication skills. I think that he was always able to articulate where the cuts need to be made and why the cuts need to be made. So, that would be the three things I'd be looking for in a city manager. So, thank you.
I have a 30-second card here from Rob.
This is going to be the most important decision as a general law city that the next council makes. We need someone with strong financial management expertise in a complex organization. Doesn't have to be a former city manager, maybe would be good not to go in that direction, actually. In terms of leadership skills, they need to be a team builder. They need to be an excellent verbal and written communicator. I need to hear things that they are, things like they're a harmonizer and tough negotiator. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
May I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Did these cards go into the audience participation time also, or are these cards only for the question?
For the entire time that we're here tonight.
Thank you, because I need to save them.
Welcome. Be seeking to purchase cards very soon.
I'll trade, I'll trade a question for a comment.
John. The Chamber strongly supported the surface water project. Measure I, as did the community. You opposed it. You were also suing the city over the increase in water rates needed to pay for the surface water project. Meanwhile, you're running for city council. There is a direct conflict of interest in having a city council member sponsoring a lawsuit against the city he is helping to manage. Will you give up your lawsuit if elected?
My understanding is that as a plaintiff in a lawsuit, that I would have to recuse myself from discussions about that lawsuit. We may find out from Measure P that there is no need to continue with a lawsuit, if people of Davis may make the decision. I believe strongly that Proposition 218, when it says that rates are to be proportional on a parcel basis, means that. Those are simple words, and their meaning shouldn't be in doubt. What has happened to us in the state of California is that courts elsewhere have decided that those words don't mean the things they say. And at some point, we're going to have to straighten that out, one way or the other. I don't see giving up at this point, when we've moved as far as we have, you know, toward coming to some resolution about the clear meaning of Proposition 218. If it stands the way it is, it's gutted. If people want to gut Proposition 218, that's the way. I don't want to be a party to that. So, no, I'm not planning on standing down from the lawsuit if, you know, it isn't invalidated by Measure P.
Thank you. Our next question is for Rochelle. Rochelle, 18 months ago, you voted to appoint a downtown parking task force. And after studying the issues for almost a year, the task force presented a list of 19 recommendations. The Davis Chamber, Davis Downtown, and the Yola County Visitors Bureau all endorsed the recommendations as a whole. Yet, you voted to remove two major components, including the funding stream, rendering the plan essentially unactionable. Please explain your position on this important community issue.
I'm happy to. I'm going to challenge your question with the word "funding stream." That funding stream was after the purchase of all the materials, and that was after they were implemented. The reason why I called for a pause and for a return of those items and phasing in is because nobody at the staff table nor from the parking task force could identify the actual funding stream for $1.45 million. I just think that's too large of an expenditure without some direct funding source. What we've been hearing in updates was that those were going to be coming out of grants or some other kind of combined funding, and yet there was no direct funding source identified. That is why those were moved aside. They weren't dismissed out of hand. I think it's appropriate for a source of funding. I think what was also part of the report was while the group did come to a consensus at the end and supported that, and I absolutely respect the advisory body. I respect all the input from the organizations that were there. But when it comes to implementation, I think it was important to be able to further clarify and truly support the positions and how we were going forward. I think it was important to make sure that we could have success, and that we actually do something measured. The analogy I like to use is if you're going to go and put solar on your home or do some other kind of investment, the first thing they do is do an audit, and how do we first bring down the actual bottom line, so the amount of outlay of money to make the changes is as small as possible? That means you do a phasing approach, and as you apply that to, one analogy would be, you change out your windows, you check your ducts, and you make sure that everything is efficient as possible. I think that we have to do the same thing in our downtown. I think we have to make sure that we go through the other phasing projects, whether it's looking at the spiping, whether it's looking at moving the different time zones and doing further studies. Then, we go and implement something like spending $1.5 million on meters, though I was on the record then and I'll continue to be, that we do have to take an opportunity to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Thank you, Rochelle. Sorry, I'm being very formal over here. Rob, I'm looking at this question, and, thank you. John, 60 seconds.
First, I want to make sure that we're talking about parking meters here. Is that correct? I don't want to be off topic.
We're talking about parking meters and an additional parking structure in the future.
Well, I'll talk about meters. I'll have time for that. And I just want to say that I oppose parking meters, because parking is a service to customers that's provided by the businesses that they support. In return, the businesses provide financial support to the city in the form of tax revenues, rate payments, and fees. I'm also not convinced that having meters is not going to drive shoppers elsewhere. Don't have time to get into that here, but shoppers have many options to go places other than downtown Davis to their shopping. Make them pay for street parking. After they have to drive through all those stoplights to get there, they're liable to take their business elsewhere.
John, you're a brave one for waiting into parking in downtown. I commend you for getting into that. It's the bane of my existence, and so, anyone who's willing to talk about it, I admire.
If you want to sell me a car, I'll talk about parking.
Rob, I'm looking at your next question here, and reading it now for the third time, I'm not sure that it's correct. So, let me read it as it is, and you correct me if I'm wrong. You publicly supported the cannery development, subject to better bike and pedestrian connectivity. There's the word I'm looking for, "subject." Do you think that that process was a good example of community planning? And can you please explain your take on that process?
I was not satisfied with the process. I was happy to engage directly, as someone on the Bike Advisory Commission who cares about the connectivity in and out of that site, I was very happy to engage directly over a period of three years with the developer. But it never felt right to me that a Bike Advisory Commission member, or what some refer to as a bike activist, should be directly negotiating something as important as connectivity. I think that there should have been, long before that, a clear statement coming from council with input from the Planning Commission about the priorities and what needs to be done with that site as a beginning basis of negotiations, not something we were doing at the last hour. We have a climate action plan that talks about reduction in greenhouse gases, and we know that half of those are generated by our transportation. We had a bike plan that laid out goals for, we have a new bike plan now, but we had one that laid out goals for mode share. The point is, we already had foundational documents that should have been used to lay out a negotiating position with the developer in that case, and it shouldn't been, should not have been left to individual commission members to play that role. That's my view. Having said that, I thought that the process was interesting. The process was engaged in the sense that we really were able to get down to the nitty-gritty. But these types of things should not be left for the last minute for volunteers within the community. I'll just be repeating myself if I go any further. And the reason I feel so strongly about that is, here, even as ground is beginning to be broke, we still do not have firm commitments that we will get, the great separated crossings that we have been discussing for three years. That's proof that the process was not correct.
Thank you, Rob.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Again, sorry. Was the question related only to the connectivity, or was it about the process at the end for cannery?
Both the connectivity and the process of how we got to a decision on that. So, Sheila, 30 seconds.
Yes. Another part that came at the very end was about the mix of housing. There was a lot of concern, particularly from the senior community regarding the ability to have housing that was appropriate, that was single-story, that had universal design. And I am very supportive of making sure that we have housing across the entire lifespan. So, when we're moving forward, we need to make sure that we're looking at those kind of issues, and also gray water for recycling. That might have been off-topic, but that part of the whole discussion.
Thank you, Sheila. So, we have two options here. We can go into a moderated discussion, or we can ask another round of questions. So, we have about 40 minutes to do this moderated discussion. So, maybe we'll do this more of a rapid-fire so that we can try and get to as many of these other topical areas as possible. And why don't we just go with the flow of the conversation that we've had so far? And I'm going to try to do my best to point to all of you, and everyone, get your time in, and we'll probably just do, you know, 30 seconds here and there. Everyone may not actually get to speak on a specific question. And let's see how that goes, and if anyone's got big problems with it, you can raise your glass at me or something. Just don't throw it at me. So, yeah, let's do some times, if you can. Susan, let's do three minutes total on affordable housing, since Sheila just brought that up. So, as soon as I'm done asking the question, then start the three-minute timer. Affordable housing integrated within our neighborhoods has been a source of pride for our community for a very long time. But with the dissolution of our redevelopment agency, there are no longer extra funds to build affordable housing. A good example of the conundrum that we face is the new Harmony project located along I-80, which was approved before the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. We've learned a lot from that very large, someone called peripheral, almost because it's not directly connected, affordable housing project. While there's not hard data, what we're hearing from the staff there is that at least, and probably more than 50% of the residents, the first residents who moved in there, had absolutely no connection to Davis. They didn't have a job there, didn't have family there. They were part of a lottery system that anyone can be a part of. What is more important, subsidized affordable housing or financial sustainability? Those are the kinds of hard choices that we're looking at right now. Should the taxpayers of Davis be responsible for providing affordable housing to the region? Why don't we start with Rob, and then Rochelle, and then John? And let's do 30 seconds.
I mean, you nailed it. The challenge is post-redevelopment agency, what we're going to do. I, my default answer is to say, yes, we should do something. But I am only going to answer yes in the context of sitting down with the affordable housing advocates, the affordable housing providers in the county. We need, I hope it doesn't sound like a, we need to revision where we're going with this. We're going to have to continue to provide it. We are part of a region, and we need to continue to provide it. But it is revisioning time on affordable housing, I think.
Thank you. Rochelle?
I'd agree with Rob that the current model is broken without funding. But I really want to echo what you said about the dispersed affordable housing that's part and parcel of what's made Davis amazing. It's clear that children thrive when they grow up and make social, economic development throughout a community, and everybody benefits from the diversity rather than it being subject to one part of town. I think rather than just look at large A affordability, we also have to truly talk about small A affordability, where we can integrate into our current stock, and as we move forward, and partnering with the people who are doing the development, even if it's remodeling, so that we can actually add in components and find ways that we can address it.
Thank you, Rochelle. John, little A versus big A affordability, or anything else?
Well, with all respect, Kimball, I think you Well, with all respect, Kimball, I think you got it dead wrong, that sustainability and affordable housing are separate. In fact, you have to have a sustainable financial situation in order to support affordable housing. So actually, they aren't separate. They're intertwined in it. Just you can't take them apart. Davis has had lots of experience with trying different models of affordable housing, and as far as I know, and I've always been on the periphery of this, none of them has really worked that well. That doesn't mean we give up, but it does mean that we have to learn from past models and past problems. Personally, what I prefer is the mixed housing model that Davis has used in the past where you have relatively inexpensive homes intermingled among the larger homes. And I think if you look at the west side of town and the other side of 113, you'll see a lot of that. It makes for a very good community and it helps hold some housing at a somewhat lower cost. And I'll stop there.
Let me see if I can get you to clarify that a little bit. When Rochelle said little A versus big A, she meant to say that the big A affordable housing is government subsidized, little A affordable housing being small homes with fewer amenities on small lots that are market-driven affordable housing. Do you believe that the city should be pursuing one path or the other?
I think what I was trying to describe at the end there would be more like the little A that you're talking about, but you don't, you know, have, you know, a development that is all one type. I like to see a mix. I think it makes for better communities.
Thank you. Sheila, then Daniel?
I'm raising my glass. I wanted to clarify one thing. In New Harmony, there was much concern from the Montgomery Elementary School that's very nearby there that they were going to be inundated with more low-income students. Really, they were kids who were already in our district, already at Montgomery, and now they had some new housing where they could go. So that was a positive for them. I do -- I am very much supportive of mixed neighborhoods where we have all different incomes together and all different ages together. And I do have concerns about what happened around Montgomery, that there was a lot -- that's where there was a lot of affordable housing concentrated, and then it makes for a different feel for the neighborhood.
Let me ask you one follow-up question.
Yeah.
Can the citizens of Davis continue to afford to subsidize affordable housing in this community?
I think that that's a part of the community's responsibility. I don't -- we need to have a community conversation about how big that A is. We need to have conversations with the other levels of government and see if we can draw some of that money to Davis. But a smaller, but not -- it's better to do the mixed approach than to have separate.
Thank you. Daniel?
I think you nailed on the head when we can't really afford to continue subsidizing, not in the near future. I mean, I think that right now, if we declare bankruptcy against me because of the roads, not because of the pensions, and it's one of those things we need to establish our priorities. I will say that the little A, the idea of a small home movement, I think has always meshed well with Davis. I always think that one of our infill projects with the small home movement would be phenomenal. Doesn't have to be quite as extreme as, say, the domes, but I think the idea of having very small houses on very small lots with -- that are affordable, not in the government subsidy way, but they're just cheaper, much cheaper than the average home in Davis. I think that 'd mesh very well with Davis and that'd be something I would be interested in looking into. Thank you.
Can we talk more on this or is that done? Are we done with -- we're way over. We're two minutes over, so let's move on. All right, so I'm going to take a little point of personal privilege here and I hope you all indulge me. Most of these -- all of these questions have been created by a group of -- now I'm getting the yellow card. Have been created by a group of chamber leaders who volunteered their time and spent a lot of time and effort on that, but this question is one that I think is personally very important and it gets at a very specific piece of process. And I ask this all the time and I've been asking it for three or four years, and so if you're annoyed with me for saying it, then just be done with that. If you don't, I might -- if you actually support it, maybe I'll create a website and you can support me further. Okay, so here's the question. So that citizens and community organizations may better support the city's work in these challenging financial times, the Chamber of Commerce requested over two years ago that the city adopt two common-sense procedures. A, a 10-day rule. Only consider council meeting agenda items that have been available on the city council meeting website with all staff reports and supporting documents for 10 calendar days. And B, a normal-time rule. Meet only twice per month and adjourn no later than 11:00 PM. Many have stated that these changes are not possible, yet many in this community believe that the only way we can move forward together as a community is if these changes are instituted. Can you each offer us 30 seconds on your position here? And why don't we start with Daniel since we ended with you last, and then we'll go to Rob, then Sheila, then John, and then Rochelle?
Absolutely. I think that our city employees are stressed and overworked right now. There's no doubt about it. I mean, I don't think the city council says no to enough items. It's one of those things where we just go everywhere. I would -- the 10-day rule is kind of interesting. I have to think on it. However, I'd be willing to adjourn city council meetings earlier. However, I would say I'd prefer just to have weekly city council meetings. I mean, we all know what we're getting into up here. I mean, if time's an issue, we really shouldn't be running. I think that I'd much prefer weekly meetings that adjourn, say at 10 or 11. That way we can look into it. As for the 10-day rule, I'd have to look more into that. I understand where you're coming from, but really I think it just takes discipline on behalf of the city council members to decide what we should focus on at this time.
Thank you, Daniel. Let me clarify just a little bit. Part of the background on the 10-day rule is that the community has the time to actually read the documents. Often these staff reports are 40, 50, 80 pages long, and council members are expected to read those over the weekend and sometimes within 24, 48 hours. So to expect the community to be able to participate in these conversations and for them to be able to do that over the weekend when they have the stresses of family, work, life, other commitments, seems to many unreasonable. And the same for the normal-time rule. How many parents with small children are going to stay in this room past 12, 1, 2 AM in order to watch an important matter? So thank you for bringing that up, Daniel and Rob.
I would support the 10-day rule. Look, I've been on a lot of boards. Anytime you come in and want to change a cultural thing like that, change the frequency of meetings or, you know, noticing it feels like, how can we do it? We can do it. We must do it for the reasons you're talking about. It's about transparency. It's about giving people time to vet the issues and have time. That is a no-brainer. Finishing at 11 o'clock, sure, great idea. Here's the issue. We have an engaged citizenry. They want to talk. We need to listen to them. That's our format. What we can do is we can make sure as a city council that we set priorities at the beginning of the year and place them first on the agenda. People want to stay later and talk. We will be here to listen, but we need to make sure that the key business items, core business items, get dealt with first. So if we do that, we can still maintain a high level of citizen engagement, which is going to continue, but we can also make sure that we get the priorities dealt with first. And I would support those kind of changes.
Thank you, Rob. Sheila, you have experience with engaged citizenry. Your thoughts?
I do indeed. And actually, before Gina Tim and I were elected and I was sitting out in that audience, it would always go way past midnight. I remember taking notes and I said, "We're starting the budget at 1:30 AM. Nobody's watching but me." So once we got on there, we made the rule that we had to vote every 15 minutes. Once we got to 11 o'clock as a way to help to reel us in. And now it's really the chair, so the mayor for here and the school board president, works with the administration to look at the -- to see where there's going to be the public input, which is very important, and to see what will be a hot topic. You can never tell what's going to walk in the door. There might be something long, but it's really the responsibility of the team to make sure that it's short enough. So now we fixed that problem. So I have experience in that area and actually that's one of the things that I would like to do. Regarding the two times a month, I think we might be able to do that. We could reel it back to some, but there is important work that needs to be done, so we might have to meet more than two times per month and the staff reports 10 days before. Absolutely.
Thank you, Sheila. Absolutely. I'll take you at that. John?
Well, I think we're talking about a 10-day rule here for agenda items and not letting the meetings run later than, I don't know, what, 10 or 11 o'clock, something in there. Sounds good to me. I particularly like the early adjournment part now that I'm eligible for Medicare. I remember trying to stay awake in those late-night board -- school board meetings. I want to agree with Rob, though, about prioritizing the agenda items so that the issues that people are most interested in do come up earlier because I'm not sure that all of the business of the city can be conducted in two meetings a month from, you know, 7 to 11. I just don't know that that can be done. So I wouldn't commit to that, but I like the idea of prioritizing the items.
Thank you, John. Rochelle?
Well, I'm in a unique position because I'm in the middle of this. Couple of things I'm going to start with. 100 less employees. And part of my consulting business is to work in other jurisdictions, and I've done the 10-day rule, and it's an excellent idea and to have the two meetings per month. When you have a 10-day rule, you have to think of that Thursday that is a week and a half in advance, so staff is constantly preparing for the next meeting. When you have a small amount of items on a budget, on whether it's budget times, it doesn't work, but when you have a small amount of items on an agenda, you can do that. Rob is right. This is Davis. People are engaged. I do think that we can prioritize. I think we can streamline the way that people come in and engage in public comment. A lot of other communities use cards and other pieces. And is that my time?
That's your time. Thank you, Rochelle. Okay, let's move on to -- let's just do a yes or no. Yes or no question. Let's see how that works.
Light me up.
Audience likes that. Do you support the recommendations of the Innovation Park Task Force? That assumes that you've read them, so.
Yes.
If you haven't, it's okay for you to say, "I'm not sure." So let's go with yes, no, I'm not sure. Do you support the recommendations of the Innovation Park Task Force? Let's start with John and go down the line.
I haven't read it all, so I can't say that I know.
I'm not sure. Sheila?
Yes.
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 Very good. That was fun, huh?
[laughing]
Okay, more of those. All right. I'll work on a yes or no question while they're answering this. This next one. So Sheila already addressed this a little bit in one of her comments, and if anyone has -- let me pause just for a second. If anyone in the audience has questions, please raise those up and bring them down to Betsy. And Betsy, if you feel like there's some themes emerging, go ahead and pass them down to me and we'll start throwing them in the mix. So Sheila has already mentioned this, but -- and it's all over the newspaper today on the front page of the Enterprise and Bob Dunning's column. So far, Davis has spent $400,000 and authorized additional funds to pursue information about converting to a locally-controlled, city-operated electric utility instead of using Pacific Gas and Electric. Similar recent projects, as described in today's Enterprise, in other cities have had mixed results, to say the least. In light of our significant budget shortfalls and economic crisis that you all agree we have, do you think it makes sense to continue to invest funds into a project that may not ever come to fruition? Let's -- we're going to give you each 30 seconds, and so why don't we start with Rob this time and go down the line. 30 seconds, Rob.
I very much agree with the stance that Brett Lee took on this a week or so ago. Invest can mean using more intensively local expertise, and that's exactly what we have. We can continue to pursue all options for local control, and we can do it by using people who are in our community to help us understand the full range of options. This is the future. We need to walk into it. We can use our local resources to get us there.
So to be clear, you do not support using city dollars or you just want people to volunteer their?
No, no. I think much reduced city dollars. I think we can get some volunteerism. It's already happening. And we can also possibly use local consultants at a much lower rate, which is essentially volunteerism. This is already happening.
So I'm going to question you a little bit on this in that I thought that Mr. Lee's stance was that we needed to push a pause button here. I did not think
No.
-- his position was to continue using
Brett asked for a
-- significant city resources to move forward.
He asked for a very specific thing, which I think is right, and that is, what is the timeline that is ahead of us? What's the timeline for getting to a POU? That was his question. Give me what other cities have experienced. But I can tell you, already in this community, there are volunteers, there are people involved in the energy industry who are already lifting and saying, "This is what it's going to take to get to a dispersed supply and distribution system," because that's the future. It's already happening.
So thank you for that, and I'm -- so I'm going to -- if anyone else answers, yes, the city should be committing resources to it, then the follow-up question I'd like you to answer is, what is an appropriate dollar amount? What is that figure?
Can't answer that question.
Is it under a million?
Well, it's far under a million.
Is it under 100,000?
You know what? I'm just not going to answer that question right now. All I'm saying is, we have a significant possibility to draw on volunteers and expertise here.
Okay.
Brett's approach was to take a very careful look at what the process is going to be. I support that.
Thank you. Okay, so Rochelle, the -- let me reread the question.
Oh, I understand the question.
I just want to make sure that everyone here gets the exact question and we can stick to it because it's a big issue. In light of significant budget shortfalls, do you think it makes sense to continue to invest significant funds into a project that may not ever come to fruition? And if so, how much? Rochelle?
Significant is a spongy word. 1950s bury us of water rights. It's never a good time to invest. It's always an easy argument. I stood strong with Brett that we do need to slow down and go in a staged approach. I think it was premature to do the project manager before we were able to hear from a couple more jurisdictions about what their process is. I do think we do have to start looking at it realistically, but not just be trapped within the minds of a publicly-owned utility, but also to continue to explore other green renewables. But it's never going to be a good time, and I agree with Rob. We have some excellent resources and I think we have to move forward with it.
Since Rob got two follow-up questions, I'll give you one. Have you had a chance to read today's Davis Enterprise, the article by Dave Ryan that describes other entities and municipalities that have gone through a similar
I have not read the specific article, but I'm familiar from having to do a lot of research for this particular item, that there are other communities and they are all not like Davis. Just like the arguments made that we're not 100 years in like Palo Alto, we're also not Hercules. We have incredible brain trust here in our community. We have a commitment to an ethos of renewable energy. So I think comparing doesn't always work apples to apples.
I was asking you a leading question, I guess, was, is this the right time to be the innovator, to be the one standing forth and saying, "We're going to do something new that no one else has done before"?
I think it is the right time to do the exploration with the resources we have. I do not support just suddenly committing the full 600, and that is why continually we push on the phasing so that we have an opportunity if it looks like it's not the right fit. But I think it has shortsighted for us not to look now while we have people engaged and the opportunities to actually explore our options.
Thank you, Rochelle. Daniel?
Yeah, I don't think we should ever stop innovating. I think the city should spend some resources on this. And I think that Rob really hit the nail on the head when looking at the Housing Steering Committee, the Innovation Park Task Force, the Downtown Parking Task Force, the Water Advisory Committee, I was always blown away by just how knowledgeable some of the people are in here. And one thing I do think the city should do is convene some sort of public utility company commission with the idea of reaching out to Marin County, Sonoma County, SMUD, Roseville, all the places that I've either gone with a community choice aggregation or some kind of public utility company and moving ahead from there. So yes, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Sorry, I don't have any more follow-up questions for you. Sheila?
Two weeks ago, when I was doing my walking, the only thing people wanted to talk about was the Fifth Street Diet. This weekend, people only wanted to talk about public utility and they -- I could not find anybody who was interested in us spending money right now to do this. I absolutely agree that we need to move towards more renewables. I really appreciate it anytime the city wants to do something that will save me 20% on my electric bill or any other bill, but I think hiring a manager and moving forward with this right now is not the right time.
Thank you. John?
I'm not going to sugarcoat this. I don't support pursuing a city-run electric utility at this time or spending money studying it. We need to fix our problems first, and then my requirements for seriously considering a publicly-owned utility at any time are that it be clear from the outset that a city-owned utility must be as reliable as what it replaces and it must provide electricity at rates that are competitive with PG&E. I've got a lot more to say, but apparently there's not time to do it.
Thank you, John. Hopefully, all of you will see this as an opportunity to further expand on these items on your websites and other campaign materials. So we've got a question from the audience now, and let's do 10 seconds. question from the audience now, and let's do 10 seconds for each of you on this question. All right. 10 seconds. And so I'll read the question for you. I'll let you figure it out. I'm going to read it a couple of times. And what we're trying to get at here is each one of your, your formal experience with budgeting. So I'd like to know from each one of you, what is the largest budget, and we're talking dollar amount per annum, which you have been responsible for, meaning you were helping to organize that budget in a significant leadership way, or oversaw it, implemented it, at what organization and for how many years? So I want to know the largest budget that you've been responsible for, the size of that budget. This can be private industry, it can be public sector, whatever it is, for which you have been responsible. What organization and for how many years? So 10 seconds each, and let's start at this end with John.
Davis Joint Unified School District, between 40 and 50 million dollars, four years.
Thank you. Sheila?
Davis School District, it's gone up since then. It's $85 million, and it's been for nine years. I'm also on the board for the Area 4 Agency on Aging. That's $9 million per year. I've been on there.
That's 10 seconds. Daniel?
My business. I won't go into details of how much revenue, but less than 84 million. And always dealing with less money than you want to have to deal with. Thank you.
We respect the privacy of public enterprise. So Rochelle?
245 million to 255 million, City of Davis, four years.
Thank you. Rob?
I was CEO of a nonprofit organization, the Mennonite Central Committee, which is an international confederation with an annual budget in the area. When I was there, about 45 million.
For how long?
I did that for 18 months.
Thank you. While we're getting our next question prepared, I want to remind that all of you have a 30-second question card that you may ask another candidate a question, and hope that you'll use those before we leave here today. So our next question, we have talked about just a little, well, we've actually, everyone has touched on this a little bit, but I think that it bears more discussion. And many of us sitting in this room at this table on the dice have talked with city staff about this, and we've already addressed the issue that our city staff are our neighbors and our friends and important people in our lives and with our community, and that many believe they have been overburdened. There comes a point when you cannot do more with less. Compared to six years ago, we have at least 120 fewer staff members. And I don't know that our community completely appreciates that, but we have actually done a good job cutting, cutting, cutting not only services but personnel. A lot of that's been through attrition, but the fact of the matter is, six years ago, we had 120 more full-time equivalent staffers. And we had a budget surplus, not a budget deficit. Yet the council continues to take on new projects and assign them to city staff. If elected, how would you address this imbalance? Let's do a minute each, and let's start with John.
You're talking about the imbalance between the availability of staff and the demands on staff? Is that what this question is?
The availability of staff resources and financial resources.
The way you address it is to recognize it as being a problem, and you prioritize what you think the important things that the council needs to get done. I see doing a budget review process as the most critical action that the board should be, I'm sorry, the council should be involved in. And so my priorities for staff work would be in that area with, and not having them work on public utility proposals and paid parking proposals and all of these other things we've been talking about tonight that really require a balanced budget in order to successfully implement them.
Thank you, John. Sheila?
We've experienced this in the school district, and at a certain point, you can't, we would say you can't cut your way out of this, and so we have to look at what are the priorities. So the staff need to give feedback to the council so that they know when, even if they have an expectation something's going to get done, it won't get done because there are just not sufficient time or finances or people to do it. So I think that there has to be that honest conversation, and each time before the council makes a decision to add either additional, something that needs to be funded, or it needs to have some more people, they need to have that conversation with the staff and with the community and make sure that it can be done, because it's likely not realistic at this time unless you take something else off the plate.
Thank you. Daniel?
Yeah, every time an agenda item goes on the city council, I don't think I've ever seen someone say, you know, "No, we can't do that right now. It's too much time." And there's some issues that we obviously have to move into, but I think even the little ones where you say, "Why don't we have staff look into this?" Or, "Why don't we have staff take a look back and get back to us next week?" I think there comes a time when we have to take even the little things or even some of the big things and understand that as Sheila and John have been going on about priorities, if we can find the ones we really need to deal with in this time of fiscal crisis, that could help alleviate some of the strain for some of the staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Six years ago, we did not have a real budget surplus. We probably at that time already had 10 to 50 million dollars in deficit if you included all the unfunded maintenance for our parks and our roads and the rest of our infrastructure. So I just, I challenge that premise. I think we just had things off the books that we now have on the books. Projects pay for staff, not programs. We've done a lot of project cutbacks in our community. Every time something is put together, when there's a building built, if there's redevelopment that's happening, those are line item budgets that actually assign people to those that cover that, so it doesn't just come directly out of the general fund. I think by doing some realignment on what we're focusing on and where we have our staff, we'd be in better alignment. We also need our community to get engaged in what to prioritize. When funds come forward and fees come forward, we also often end up in a conflict that people do not want to have to pay more for services, and yet we have to fund staff. So I think the alignment and being able to allocate what the true cost is would help us move forward.
Thank you, Rochelle. Rob?
Yeah, I disagree with your conclusion that the city did a good job in cutting by attrition. All that gives us is less staff.
I didn't say it was good. I just said it happened.
You said they did a good job.
They did a good job of cutting. Maybe I didn't qualify that that was the best thing to do.
So don't wait, don't take this, don't take my time. He's talking. All right, so give me time. All right.
Rob, you have your full time.
Okay. No, I mean, what I'm saying is that when you cut by attrition, and I've been in organizations that have done this, you end up with really bad imbalances, especially attrition at this level. I mean, the first thing we need to do is, and maybe this is what Rochelle was saying, we need to do an analysis of our staff and see if what we have matches the core services we want to provide. We've got to start that right away, because it's dishonoring to workers to be placed in a situation where they're not doing the job they were hired to do. It's dishonoring of them, and we need to stop doing that. So we need a full analysis. We also, and maybe it's just another way of saying what's already been said, this is the time now, when this council sits for the first couple of months, we've got to get back to what is our core business. That's a prioritization question. Core business does not mean simply safety, et cetera. It can also mean amenities, but we need to have the conversation about what our core business is and make sure we have the staff to match it.
Thank you, Rob. Daniel, 30 seconds. Microphone?
Sorry. Thank you. Rob, what you said was wonderful, but I had a question for you. I understand that attrition is maybe not the most strategic way of doing it, but realistically, it's the easiest way of doing it. I look at how the DCEA, when we laid off the nine tree trimmers, is without question the ugliest part of the cost-cutting process. We lost a lot of faith of the public employee groups. We lost a lot of fear from the public opinion. How would you have shrunk the workforce without attrition?
Thank you, Rob. One minute to answer that question from Daniel.
I don't know. I don't know exactly. But anytime we face the kind of fiscal challenge that we're facing now, all cities, all entities, all nonprofits, all for-profits, new need to stop and ask the fundamental question about core business. I don't think we've done that. Therefore, it's impossible to match what we have or what we need, because we haven't done that process. We need to do that right away. That's the only way we're going to be able to face it. So what happens, and I understand it, I'm not casting aspersions at the current council, we get caught up in the doing. But when we face the serious fiscal challenges we're facing now, we have to pause. We have to stop and say, "Are we achieving even what we say we're setting out to do?" And if we're not doing that, then we need to reorient.
John, 30-second card.
Last one. I didn't talk about attrition because I didn't have time, but I would like to agree that attrition is an awful way to do staff reorganization, because you end up with holes that are really in the wrong places. You can't get jobs done because there's no one there to do it. So the city really does need to go through a staff reorganization assessment and figure out the best way to structure themselves with the resources that are available.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify that the Chamber of Commerce does agree with that position that attrition is not the best way. From a business perspective, I think we all know that attrition is not the best way to cut labor costs.
The Table Show.
Thank you for that. All right, I have another yes or no question, since it was so popular with the audience. John made a comment about outsourcing, and we have had some experience in the city over the past couple of years with outsourcing, and the best example that we all know is with our tree trimming services. And Rob alluded earlier to a budget scenario that the city manager presented that just made up, a flat cut across all departments. And if you got into the details of that, you would have seen that there were outsourcing components within that, mostly janitorial services and the like. The question is, do you support increased outsourcing as a budgeting priority? Yes or no? Do you support using outsourcing as a budgeting tool and priority? So let's start with Daniel in the middle, and then we'll go Rochelle, Rob, John, Sheila. Daniel?
I'll go with yes, but Rob's making the point that is a very tough question to say yes or no to. So if we, we've got 10 minutes left.
Yes, Rochelle.
If we're having a vote on this, whether we should go yes or no. I mean, I say no.
I'm asking, do you support outsourcing, increased outsourcing as a budget priority? Is it a tool that we should be using?
A priority, a priority?
Tool.
Because that would be easier to answer if it was like the priority strategy.
Is it a prioritized tool that we should be using? Not in all cases, but is it something that should really be on the table at every single question? Rochelle, yes or no?
No, not for a tool, but yes for service delivery when appropriate.
Rob?
I went to law school.
Is that a good thing?
I didn't. Quality control.
Yes, if there's good quality control. Okay, John?
We've got to have the tool. Yes.
Sheila?
No, not as a priority, the best way to approach it.
Is it a tool that should be on the table every time we have a discussion?
Is it a tool? Yes, it is a tool.
Should it be? I mean, it's not, it's rarely on the table. Should it be on the table every time?
Not as a priority. I didn't go to law school, but I know some lawyers. I'm on a board with lots of lawyers.
Okay, it is 8:23. We have seven minutes left. And Betsy, are there any more questions we need to look at?
Pass them all down there.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
We have, yes, Sheila, please.
This is a general, I have 30 seconds, so.
To any one of, you have to, need to address it.
But can it be, could it be all of us if it was a yes/no? It's an easy one, though.
Let's hear it, and then we'll decide.
Okay. When I ran for school board the two times, and now people always asking me, "Who are you running against?" And I never say, "I'm running against anyone. I am running for a position." And there are two positions that are open to the five of us. So I would hope that, well, two of us are going to be working together as part of a governance team, and so I would like to invite all of us to go out for breakfast sometime soon so that we can start to develop the relationship, because two of us are going to be working together, and I would really like this to be a positive campaign. That's my yes/no question. Will you go to breakfast with me? Yes.
Yes, and given John's fiscal responsibility, he will pay.
He's buying.
John, are you paying for everyone?
I think fiscal responsibility means exactly.
I didn't hear a yes or no from you, though, actually.
Yes, will you come with us?
I like breakfast.
Okay, good. Thank you. I've used my question.
And you're going somewhere local, right?
Yeah, exactly, of course.
A member of the Davis Chamber of Commerce? Good. Okay, so I want to be respectful of everyone's time tonight. We've got six, five minutes left now, and so let's give everyone two minutes. One minute, one minute. This is a hard one, but I want you to think metaphorically, I want you to think objects and items and things that people see, feel, do. This is a big question, but what is your long-term vision for Davis? What do you want Davis to look and feel like? And I know that's a hard question to answer in one minute. What do you want Davis to look and feel like in 10, 15, 20 years as a result of your action and activity on the Davis City Council, if you're elected? What do you want Davis to look and feel like in 10 to 20 years as a result of your time on the Davis City Council? So why don't we start with Rochelle? We'll go to Rob and come around.
What I want it to look like is a prosperous, safe, beautiful community that clearly is part of a world-class university, that has businesses that reflect the industry that comes out of that university, that shows people that are safely biking to and from throughout the community and feel like there's a complete interaction. We're very close now. Unfortunately, a lot of it is just a facade because we're crumbling behind. My vision would be that the strengths that we have now, that I fell in love with over 20 years ago, are long-term and self-sustaining, and that we continue to pursue all kinds of avenues that really reflect our values.
Very good. Thanks, Rochelle. Rob?
I have a vision for a community where 60% of the kids are walking or biking to school every day, and where most of us are using those modes to get around town. My vision is for a dense downtown where people live, a lot of people live in mixed-use housing, which will attract retail into our urban spaces. I want, I have a vision for a town that people say, "University and city town, that's a model for the way we want to partner going forward into our future." Good, I still have 30 seconds. And I want, I want people to know, I want people to know when they come here that they will be safe and that they will be able to access the services that they need. That's my vision for, for the town, and hopefully I'll be able to contribute bringing those things about.
Thank you, Rob. John?
Well, I think my vision would be of a community, and that would be a place where a variety of people with different economic and social backgrounds could afford to be together, to create the same kind of wonderful mix that we have today.
Thank you, John. Sheila?
Well, I spoke to some of that in my beginning remarks, but what I'm really hoping to bring to the council and my vision for Davis is a safe and caring community. And I know that was a bit of a joke when, that Bob Dunning originally said when I was running, he said, "Well, Sheila's kind of neighborly, and I talk about my 65,000 neighbors." But that's really how I feel about this time and the town, and I think if we, if there's a problem before us, that if we all work together, it doesn't always take more money. It doesn't always take fighting between people. It's not a zero-sum game. I really think that we can work together as a community on a shared vision and be more neighborly and talk to the people, know the people who are on your street, know that this is a town-and-gown kind of place, that the university is, we're Davis because the university is here, so there are our friends over on the other side. And so I just hope that we all, you know, it's the nurse and me. Sorry, I really want everyone to be a neighbor and caring.
Thank you, Sheila. Daniel?
I'll keep it short and sweet. I want to be biking down the Green Belt and see kids being pushed in strollers by parents who are working for local homegrown companies that are changing the world. Thank you.
Very good. Well, on behalf of the business community of Davis, I want to thank our five candidates, everyone sitting here at the table, everyone who's worked behind the scenes, everyone in our audience here today, and everyone watching at home for their participation and making our community better. We truly are all in this together, and I think that the answers that we received tonight demonstrated that very well for us. So how about a round of applause for everyone in this wonderful community? And with that, I would like to note that it is 8:20. And with that, I would like to note that it is 8:29. We are done one minute ahead of time. Thank you, everyone.
Campbell Pope for Hall Monitor. Just saying.
I was going to say, that's Council Monitor. Council Monitor.